We are going to call this to order. We have established a quorum. That gets us to our pledge of allegiance. To do that, can we please hear from our senior student board member to lead us in the pledge?
Good evening, to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. That gets us to the adoption of the agenda. I make a motion to adopt the agenda with removing Governance Issue 1C, or I guess that is, excuse me, A1C. So it is to adopt the agenda, moving or pulling out to discuss separately, A1C. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, it's been first and seconded. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All right, that is unanimous. Thank you so much. Next, that gets us to the election of a TSBA Legislative Liaison. I would like to make a motion that we nominate Ms. Cheryl Mays, or Member Cheryl Mays, for that position.
Second.
A nomination. Thank you. I appreciate that clarification. I'm having a motion, nope, a nomination, for TSBA Legislative Liaison with it being Member Cheryl Mays.
Oh, I make a motion to accept the nomination? Or to, nominations, okay.
Nope, so it's been first, so do we have any discussion? Are there any other nominations? That would be the discussion. Anybody else?
Say it again.
Do we have any other nominations? That would be enough. Nominations are now closed, thank you so much. All right. Parliamentarian, do we need to vote on this?
Yeah.
That's what I thought, so, okay. I was like, you're still looking at me like I'm doing something wrong again. I'm like, I apologize. The nominations are new, guys. All those in favor of this nomination, please raise your hand. You can vote for yourselves. All right. Thank you, that was unanimous. Anything else? Okay. Thank you so much for sitting through that with us. We don't often do nominations, so I apologize for me calling it a motion instead of a nomination and having that confusion for a second. That gets us to awards and recognitions. So for that, I'm going to turn it over to our Director of Schools, Dr. Adrian Battle.
Good evening Chair Arad and Board Members. We've got an outstanding educator, many outstanding students, and a beautiful new partnership to recognize tonight, so I'd like to go ahead and jump in. The first person that I would like to recognize tonight is Dr. Dorothy Gunn. Dr. Gunn, could you please approach the podium? It is my deepest pleasure to be able to recognize Dr. Gunn tonight. Dr. Gunn has stepped in as interim principal on multiple occasions in multiple capacities across the district. Most recently, she served as the interim principal at Robert Churchwell Elementary, as well as Park Avenue Elementary. Currently, Dr. Gunn is set to serve as a transition principal of Alex Green Elementary as we expand our portfolio of schools with Brick Church Middle School. We'll come back to that in just a little while. But I want to just acknowledge that this is not the first time Dr. Gunn has come out of retirement to serve the thousands of students and staff of Metro Nashville Public Schools. She has previously served, again, as an interim principal. She's served as the interim executive office of our priority schools. She has served as a success coach. I could go on and on and on because her talents are just so great. She has always been there for the district and always answered the call. She's answered the call, y'all, when we've asked her to serve. And we cannot thank her enough. So again, it is my honor and it's my pleasure to give this recognition of distinguished service to Dr. Dorothy Gunn for her dedication to Metro Nashville Public Schools, for supporting us in our time of need and doing so in excellent style. You all help me acknowledge Dr. Dorothy Gunn. And Dr. Gunn, could you come up? We would like to get a picture with you. And I think Dr. Bellamy and Chief Perry, you should join. And any board members. Again, I'd like to thank Dr. Gunn for her service and her leadership for many, many years across Metro Nashville Public Schools. It's a great pleasure and privilege every spring to be able to recognize the high-achieving students and soon-to-be graduates, not yet soon, who've led the way academically at each of our high schools. Our valedictorians and salutatorians have worked extremely hard for the past four years. They have shown not just their brilliance, curiosity, and academic skills, but also quite a lot of tenacity and resilience to reach this point. They are creative and critical thinkers. They are athletes and artists. They are leaders in their classrooms and their organizations and their career academies and on the playing fields across the district. And some of them have helped me directly by serving on my student leader's cabinet. And as you will see and hear in a moment, these students are going places, important places where they will continue to do meaningful work. It's not inspiring, but it isn't, it's not surprising, but it is inspiring to think about how our schools, from teachers and principals to academy coaches, school counselors, avid teachers, college and career coaches, gear-up team members, and other support staff have helped prepare these students, and how these students have also prepared themselves to meet this moment and move to the next stage of their lives. And we know very well that parents, grandparents, brothers, sisters, and other family members have played huge parts too. These young people wouldn't be who they are without all the love and support poured into them every day by those who are closest to them. Thank you, families, for sharing your young people with us all these years. So let me tell you who our valedictorians and salutatorians are, and please keep an eye on the screens above you to see their photos and learn a little more about their accomplishments, activities, and plans. Students, if you will. Students, if you will, please come up to the area around the podium and face this admiring, proud audience as your name is called. You might have to squeeze in together a bit by the time you're all up here. And then after that, we'll have everyone come up so we can take a big group photo in front of the board table at the end. All right, so give us a second as we get our PowerPoint slide up. All right. So we're going to start with Antioch High School. From Antioch High School, we have valedictorian Yosufa Charles, who is leaning towards attending the University of Pennsylvania, and salutatorian Marco Dos, who is on his way to Vanderbilt University this fall. From Big Picture High School, we have valedictorian Najah Magar, who will be attending Nashville State Community College. Again, Najah will be attending Nashville State Community College with plans to then go to a four-year university. And salutatorian Jeremiah Buckley is heading to the University of Tennessee Knoxville. From King Ridge High School, the valedictorian of the class of 2024 is Genesis Blanco De Leon, who is, who plans to pursue a nursing degree at a local four-year university. And the salutatorian is Ann Fettmane, who is on her way to Vanderbilt University. From Early College High School, where students can earn both their diploma and an associate's degree from Nashville State Community College in four years, the valedictorian is Simone Hodges, who is considering Belmont, Tennessee State University, and Rhodes College. While salutatorian Kathleen Barlow plans to study medicine at a historically black college and university. From East Nashville Magnet High School, the valedictorian is Reese Thompson, who is heading to Tennessee State University. And the salutatorian is Sakaya Brown, who will be attending the University of Memphis. From Glencliff High School, we have valedictorian Yan Lee, who is on her way to Vanderbilt University. And salutatorian Sophia Jimenez-Ares will be attending Lipscomb University. So both Yan and Sophia are participating in sports tonight, so they couldn't be with us, but they are representing Glencliff High School and MMPS on the field. From Hillsborough High School, the valedictorian is Clara Weedman, who has been accepted to UT Knoxville, Butler University, Walford College, Deep Hall, and Clemson. And the salutatorian is Audrey Weedman, who is heading. I didn't think y'all were going to catch that, but Audrey. Audrey is heading to Vanderbilt University. And yes, Clara and Audrey are twins, so give it up for their parents, who supported them along the way. From James Lawson High School, the first valedictorian in school history has a name that is familiar to board members, and that is. That would be on me, I'm moving a little too fast. I'll come back to James Lawson. From Hillfalk Academic Magnet High School, we have our valedictorian Mira Burkey, who is still deciding on her college destination, but knows she wants to study neuroscience. While salutatorian Jerry Zhang is on his way to the University of Pennsylvania. From Hunter's Lane High School, we have valedictorian Joe Tran, who will be attending Tennessee State University. And salutatorian Sunare Norm, who plans to attend either Austin Peay State University or Middle Tennessee State University. Now, from James Lawson High School, the first valedictorian in school history has a name that will be familiar to all of us, and that is Lawrence Kimbo, whose sister Angelie was one of our first student board members a few years ago. But this is Lawrence's moment, okay? So I must acknowledge that Lawrence is on his way to Vanderbilt University. All right, and next up, we have James Lawson's very first salutatorian, Anton Doe, who has been accepted to the University of California Irvine, UT Knoxville, UT Chattanooga, Belmont, and MTSU. From Maplewood High School, the valedictorian is Bernardo Diaz Valley Jr., and he is on his way to Belmont University on a full-ride Bell Tower Scholarship. While the salutatorian Jasmine Winfrey Horton has received a full-ride scholarship to Fisk University. I think Jasmine had to work tonight, her mom may be here. Thank you for coming. Her mother's here, who is representing her, so thank you, Mom, and thank you to all the parents and grandparents and others who raised these amazing students. All right, moving on to Martin Luther King Jr. Academic Magnet High School, we have our valedictorian Ina Sibitan, is heading to Yale University, where she has received a full-ride scholarship. Just in case y'all didn't hear that, full-ride scholarship to Yale University. And salutatorian Solomon De Breezyon is considering numerous offers from top universities with plans to study biomedical engineering. All right, up next, from McGavick High School, we have valedictorian Mayor Patel, who will be attending Belmont University on a full-ride Bell Tower Scholarship. And salutatorian Rivers Allen, who is on her way to the University of Mississippi's Honors College. From Nashville School of the Arts, valedictorian Deidra Kelly will be attending Vassar College. Please give it up for Deidra. And salutatorian Elena Ruiz is considering George Washington University, Bard College, Belmont, and Sawani. All right, from John Overton High School, we have valedictorian Natalie Pinton, who is still deciding where she'll go to college, but plans to major in biochemistry. And salutatorian Vincent Guo. We know Vincent. Who is on his way to the University of Tennessee Knoxville. Yeah, he is. All right, from Pearl Cone High School, the valedictorian of the class of 2024 is Ariana Thomas, who will attend Garden City Community College. And again, Ariana will attend Garden City Community College on a full basketball scholarship before she continues her studies at UT Knoxville. While salutatorian Damon Cotton is heading to Belmont University on a full-ride Bell Tower Scholarship. All right, from Stratford STEM Magnet High School, we have valedictorian Shauna Merza, who will be attending Vanderbilt University on a full-ride scholarship. And salutatorian Gary Daly, who is heading to Middle Tennessee State University. From MMPS Virtual School, valedictorian Everett Scott is on his way to Volunteer State Community College, followed by Middle Tennessee State University. And salutatorian Banan Al Malaki will be attending Belmont University. And last, but certainly, certainly not least, from White's Creek High School, we have valedictorian William Simpson II, who will be attending Belmont University on a full-ride Bell Tower Scholarship. And our wonderful salutatorian Jonah Garcia Gonzalez is on her way to Tennessee Tech University. Wow, 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 what an impressive group of students. Let's give it up for all of these outstanding valedictorians. Vows and sounds, stay there for just a moment. Again, what an incredible group of students and what a beautiful advertisement of the teaching and learning that happens every day in our schools. Our vows and sounds, you all make us so proud. Please join us up here near the board table for us to take a large group picture. Any principals, if you are here, please join us. And then, sorry. They're so important. And our school board members, if we can stand behind.
You got a hole? Y'all know the parents gotta get their photos too. I'm their parent. Like, wait. Yeah, I'm their parent. Everybody had a sense of.
Hello?
No!
You're gonna give my snacks.
All right. Can you? All right, so. Okay, so congratulations again to all of these students, outstanding students. And we wish you all the best as you start the rest of your lives after graduation.
We have some really good techniques. Have you ever seen a water ball?
Yeah.
Do you need to do one?
This is just an exciting time of the year. So thank you all for supporting our students the way that you do. Thank you for your patience. It's such a significant milestone in our student lives. So I appreciate everyone taking the time to really celebrate them. So finally, I want to recognize a group of parents who've gone above and beyond to help our schools. Not just their own children's schools, but two more, and with an impact that even more schools will experience in years to come. In fact, every elementary school in Metro Nashville Public Schools. When we started designing the new Percy Priest Elementary School, these parents expressed an interest in doing something a bit different with the gymnasium. So it would be large enough to hold all students, staff, and parents for community events. And they were willing to raise money to make it happen. While I liked that idea, I wanted to make sure we kept equity for our students top of mind. We were also getting ready to build a new Lakeview Elementary and fully renovate Paragon Mills Elementary. And I didn't want the students at those schools to miss out on something amazing, something that was also going to happen at Percy Priest. So I challenged our parents, our friends, our partners to raise the money to build our redesigned gyms at all three of the schools. And y'all, they happily accepted that mission. And they got it done. With assistance from our friends at Pencil, many individual community partners and friends, they raised $5 million in just 67 days to benefit the community. So this benefit impacts Percy Priest, but also Paragon Mills and Lakeview. And the idea they had won't stop there. We now have changed our design specifications for new elementary schools to include reconfigured gyms that can serve as multi-purpose spaces as we move forward. So I want to thank and recognize all these parents and donors, but especially Shannon Martin and Katie Agnew for spearheading this fundraising effort with incredible energy and determination and setting a beautiful example of what public-private partnerships can do for our schools, our students, and our staff. So I'd like to invite Shannon and Katie to join us up here at the podium so we can recognize you. And believe me, they don't do this work to be recognized. They're doing it because they believe in our schools, in all of our school communities. And also, as Shannon and Katie are coming up, I'd also like to have Christian Buggs, CEO of Pencil, who has been a key partner in this partnership, as well as board member Aaron Block, who has been a fierce advocate for these partnerships in our community. Y'all, please help me thank and acknowledge Shannon and Katie for this incredible, incredible. So again, congratulations and thank you to Shannon and Katie, to Dorothy Gunn, Dr. Dorothy Gunn, to our class of 2024 valedictorians and salutatorians for your great work and dedication to Metro Nashville Public Schools. With that, Chair Errod, I will turn it back over to you.
Thank you. What an exciting time. I appreciate that we've had such a good crowd to recognize the much, the lots and lots of hard work, all the commitment that it's taken for those valedictorians and salutatorians. And I am excited to hear that so much of that talent is staying within our city. So with that, we're going to talk about how we are continuing to build the talent within our school system in our city through our director's report. And so for that, I will turn it back over to our superintendent, Dr. Adrian Battle.
Thank you, Chair Errod. Thank you again, board members. We're going to start with talking about an exciting new partnership, collaboration. So again, I'm very excited about this next report because I have some great news to share. As you know, it has been a mission of mine to foster collaboration and partnership between our Metro Nashville Public Schools and the great colleges and universities here in Nashville, as well as those beyond the border of our state, beyond the border of our state. Vanderbilt has been one of those critical partners in this work. We see this in the longstanding school for science and math at Vanderbilt, or SSMB, which offers qualified high school students a four-year research-centered learning experience on Vanderbilt's campus, where they engage with their faculty in diverse fields of academic study. We also see this in our work with PIER, a joint research-practice partnership focused on advancing our shared commitment to identify and eliminate educational inequities. Now I'm proud to announce that, starting with the 2024-25 school year, MMPS and Vanderbilt University's Peabody College of Education are establishing a collaboration to launch, the first of its kind in our district, a lab school at John Early Museum Magnet Middle School. So John Early was chosen for this honor due to its promising academic trajectory and the unique highway, high-quality pathways it offers to high school students and beyond. The lab school will harness Vanderbilt's remarkable academic and research excellence to significantly enhance the educational experiences of our middle school students. Our collaboration will integrate rigorous academic standards and STEAM programming, preparing our students for success in some of our most high-performing high schools in our district, including Hume-Falk Academic Magnet and Pearl Cone High School. But it's not just about academics. It's about building a comprehensive educational environment that supports all aspects of student development. I want to personally express my deepest gratitude to Vanderbilt University, particularly to Chancellor Daniel Dearmeyer and Dean Camilla Bimbo for their commitment to this partnership. Their vision aligns perfectly with ours, believing in the power of education to transform lives and unlock the full potential of our community. This collaboration will provide our teachers and students with unprecedented opportunities, such as intensive tutoring in math, professional development for teachers, and unique learning experiences directly on Vanderbilt's campus. Moreover, we are excited about the community courses and career pathways that will be accessible, fostering not just student growth, but also community advancement. I am particularly excited about the curriculum innovations that Vanderbilt will collaborate on, helping to design and implement enhanced academic supports. This is about creating a model that can be admired and replicated all across the country, showing how public and higher education can and should work together for the betterment of all students. As we look forward to the phased implementation over the next three years, let us celebrate this moment as a milestone in our journey towards educational excellence. It's a collaboration that affirms our commitment to educational equity and high achievement for all students. Now, I'd like to take a moment to recognize those in the audience who have worked so hard to make this dream a reality. So from Vanderbilt University, Andy Lyons and Marcy Singer-Gobella. Could you please join us at the podium? And from MMPS, Chief Sarah Chen and Chief Renita Perry, along with Executive Principal Jeremy Riggs. Please join us at the podium. So I wanted to take an opportunity to acknowledge, from MMPS and collaboration with Vanderbilt, how excited we are about this lab school partnership. This is transformational. This is leading the educational environment and really making sure that our students have seamless pathways and access to post-secondary opportunities. We are so grateful for this partnership and we look forward to the journey ahead. Everyone, please help me in thanking Vanderbilt University. I'm sorry. Can you, I'm sorry. Can you all come back real quick? We need to get a picture to celebrate this moment and milestone. All right, thank you again for your engagement, board members, and the process. I look forward to updating you along the journey with all the great successes that are to come. As I move into my next update, I'm going to be welcoming up Chief Renita Perry to provide an overview of our plans for Brick Church Middle School in the upcoming school year and to walk you through the process for transitioning the school from a charter operator and ASD back to MMPS. Chief Perry has led the transition team that has been working with Achievement School District staff and TDOE, who are facilitating this process, along with Lead Charter Schools. And I know, I want to thank Dwayne, I think I saw him still in the audience, for his partnership and working with us as we transition in order to create a seamless transfer of leadership over this important school in the White's Creek Cluster. Due to the delays in accountability data being released by the state, this process is happening much later in the school year than has typically happened in other transitions like those in Memphis. So it has been a challenge, but it's one that we are prepared to meet. I know this has required a lot of work by the schools of innovation, along with academic and operations teams throughout the district to pull together a plan and get working on this transition to ensure the needs of the students, staff, and families of the Brick Church community are being met. We are committed to ensuring the success of Brick Church under the leadership of MMPS, and I'm grateful to everyone who is working to ensure this transition is a success. With that, I'd like to welcome up Chief Perry to give an overview and introduce the experienced principal, who will be serving as a leader for Brick Church Middle, who knows the community, who understands the goals of the White's Creek Cluster, and is going to be prepared to continue serving students in her new role. So with that, Chief Perry, I'll turn it over to you. Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Director Battle. Thank you for this opportunity to provide the board with important information regarding the transition of Lead Brick Church Middle School from the Achievement School District back to MMPS as a district-run middle school. This is an exciting and historic time for MMPS, as this has never been done before. I'd like to begin with briefly outlining the timeline of how we arrived at this historic transition. In August of 2012, the LEAD Network was afforded the opportunity, through the state's Achievement School District, to choose schools to take over. The ASD was charged with moving schools from the bottom 5% to the top 25% of schools in the state within five years. After receiving letter grades and federal designations in late fall 2023, Lead Brick Church was permitted to apply for a change in LEA due to exiting the one-year designation list, although continuing to have a priority designation. This is relevant as it contradicts state law as it states that a school that has been removed from the LEA and placed in the ASD shall remain in the ASD until the school is no longer identified as priority school for two consecutive cycles, beginning with the 2017 Priority School List, provided, however, that no school shall remain in the ASD for more than a 10-year period. Finally, during a special call virtual meeting in February 2024, the Tennessee Public Charter Commission voted, and the Lead Brick Church application was denied based on the Executive Director's recommendation. The report stated it, Lead Brick Church would be amongst the lowest-performing schools in the commission's district and would need to be placed immediately on a corrective action plan. As a result of the commission upholding the Executive Director's recommendation, Lead Brick Church will be returned back to MMPS as a district-run school. Next, I'd like to share a few data points of Lead Brick Church since 2012. At the bottom of this table, we have data from when they were first established as a charter, as they were adding on a grade each year. Let's take a closer look at the 2016-17 school year, where this is the first set of data that captures all four grades, fifth through eighth, for the school. I'll just focus on ELA in math. The proficiency rate for math was 11.8%, while ELA was 10%. If you notice, every year after that, specifically in math, they have never exceeded those percentages, and ELA did not consistently exceed the 10% proficiency since the new ELA standards were introduced. We know that if students are not in school, they cannot learn. In addition, just as the academic data has not surpassed pre-pandemic data points, Lead Brick Church's chronic absenteeism has increased nearly 20% from the 2019-20 school year to the 2022-23 school year. In MMPS, we have several supports that will be utilized as we transition them to a district-run school, such as weekly attendance meetings, MTSS supports for both academic and non-academic, navigators, P centers, and restorative practice assistance. Our schools and the Office of Innovation are serviced by our Community Achieves Model, where site managers have caseloads of students with attendance issues and align supports based on student and family needs. In addition, they will have access to a team of specialists to support and onboard the faculty and staff. As noted on this slide, the lack of continuous improvement has led Brick Church to consistently having a priority designation. State and federal designation cycles are typically in three-year cycles, where schools have the opportunity to exit by meeting the priority exit criteria each year during the three-year cycle. The LEAD Network could not turn this school, Brick Church, around in the 12 years it was provided to do so. Lead Brick Church was taken over in 2012 with a priority designation under the new identification. under the new identification cycle and did not exit in 2013 nor 2014. In 2015, when the list was rerun, Lead Brick Church remained with a priority designation. In the subsequent years, 2016 and 2017, with the opportunity to exit priority status, Lead Brick Church did not, did not exit. As noted on the PowerPoint, this cycle repeats for every year up to the most recent identification cycle of 2023. As we began to transition Brick Church, the transition team was formed between MNPS, TDOE, the ASD and Lead and has been meeting since early March. The team was presenting information regarding the transition process to include the creation of the school exit plan, process for dispute resolution and the identification of the core transition team. As the transition team creates the school exit plan, we are guided by three milestones. By April of 2024, develop a school exit plan for Lead Brick Church that allows for transparency of processes, procedures and expectations for an effective transition to Metro National Public Schools. Increase parents, staff and community understanding of school, of the school exit plan by leading at least two information sessions by the end of April. By July 1st, 2024, conduct the official transfer to close out the successful transition of Brick Church Middle School to Metro National Public Schools. Late April, the completed school exit plan will be submitted to Commissioner Reynolds for review and approval. Once we receive feedback, the school exit plan will be sent to the Board for review prior to the next available Board meeting where the Board will vote to approve the school exit plan. We are excited to break this cycle of this priority cycle beginning next school year as we open Brick Church Middle School, an MNPS district-run school. MNPS has launched a landing page for Brick Church Middle and we invite parents, teachers and the community to explore and find important information such as enrollment, curriculum, promising scholars and much, much more. We are excited to announce that Dr. Robin Beard will be the new Executive Principal for Brick Church Middle School. Dr. Beard, as the principal of Alex Green Elementary School, has been integral in the Alex Green's exit of priority status, a recipient of the 2021 MSAP Grant where they have transitioned into a Design Technology Magnet School, a 2023 Blue Ribbon School of Excellence Lighthouse recipient, and she has been a vocal and active member of the White Creek Cluster doing the MNPS reimagined work as White Creek's Cluster is the Early College Cluster. Her expertise will catapult Brick Church Middle and parents will be excited regarding the familiarity and continued support of Dr. Beard. At this time, I'd like to ask Dr. Beard to join me at the podium to discuss the exciting opportunities for Brick Church Middle School and as they become an early college middle school. Please join me and welcome Dr. Robin Beard.
I second everything Renita said. But I'm really excited to be a part of this process and this monumental occasion and just really feeling the charge of moving us into a new direction. We know that it's about doing what's best for students, so I'm just super honored that you all trust me to do that. And some of the things that we'll be working on as a part of this early college transition is just making sure that the students at Brick Church are prepared to go on to White Creek and be a part of that trajectory. Even at Alex Green, we started some things years ago with Avid and getting them familiar with some of those processes. So that will continue at Brick Church and then again, prepare them as they go into their early college program at White Creek. I had the honor of spending the day there yesterday and it is just an amazing phenomenal environment. So I'm really glad that we now have students that will be able to transition there. And of course, we will have some good sports teams and a good band and we're going to be competition for these other schools in Metro, so be ready.
Thank you, Dr. Beard. The purpose of our presentation this evening was to provide the Board with a historical, with the historical context, outline the milestones of the school exit plan and present our new Executive Principal, Dr. Robin Beard. We are so excited about this amazing opportunity for our students to engage in an early college middle school. This is how the Board can support our efforts. Approve the school exit plan at an upcoming Board meeting. Promote the Meet the Principal Parent Meeting on this upcoming Monday, April the 29th at 6:00 PM at Brick Church Middle School. Encourage our parents to sign up for promising scholars this summer 2024. And then promote Brick Church Middle School as an early college middle school program. Thank you, and now I'll turn it back over to our Director of Schools, Dr. Battle.
Thank you so much. I'm Chief Perry. Ms. Elrod, I'll turn it back over to you to see if there's any questions from the Board.
Thank you. I will first hear from Member Tyler. I know you've got some celebrating to do. Let me ask my questions first. So just one question, especially because the attendance has been such an issue. I just wanted to confirm. I know theoretically charter schools don't have to have a zone, but this school was not under that. They did have a zone. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. They did have a zone and their zoned elementary school is Alex Green Elementary School.
Okay, so this was not an issue of students coming from all over the place and then struggling to get them to, to stay. This was something a little bit deeper than that.
So I would say that the majority of the students that are currently enrolled at Brick Church are zoned from Alex Green. They do have choice options where some students are attending the school that are outside of the zone.
Okay, okay. And I know that we have some really good plans in place for how to support our students on attendance.
Yes, ma'am, we do.
I'm just really glad to hear that and I wanted to kind of make sure that we made that crystal clear that we already have the supports ready and we just got to put them in place.
Yes, ma'am.
And then, could you just, real quick, so I have an early college high school in my district that is on Nashville State's campus and it is fabulous. And if you don't know about it, you should check it out. It's amazing. But I have not heard about early college middle schools. Can you give me a little more information about how a middle school would be prepping to be an early college program?
So we are super excited to launch this as the very first early college middle school. So first of all, what we will do is we will intervene as necessary with our children to ensure that they are ready to take college courses once they enter White Creek High School. We're also looking at how can we expand the high school offerings at the middle school so that when they get there, they can engage in those early college courses sooner rather than later at White Creek High School.
That's, that's wonderful information because it really talks a lot about the preparation and the long-term view of how it goes, especially since we're starting in Alex Green with our principal who already knows how that goes, moving her on with our students. I'm really excited to see how this goes. I'm really excited to see how it goes, so.
I just want to say I'm excited. I can't help it. This is monumental.
This is monumental.
And I've seen you at work and some of the other players in this at work and I know that we are going to get the outcomes that these children deserve. And I'm just, I'm thrilled. I'm thrilled. Thank you. Thank you for everything you do.
Senior Student Board Member, Alena.
I'm excited too. But I was just going to say, as someone who is zoned for Brick Church, it was very disheartening when I had to go out of zone to stay, you know, in, in a very, you know, in an MNPS school. And so I'm very excited to bring back a zone middle school. I think it's important to keep things in the neighborhood and making sure that students are able to transition from elementary to middle to high school and not having to compromise that to stay in MNPS. So I'm excited.
Dr. Gentry, I think that gets us to you.
I'm excited. Okay, so first of all, just, just thank you. You know, I, I got the opportunity to participate in that special called meeting from the state and was just pleased to be able to stand with you, Chief Perry and others from within the district to, to stake a claim, right? We made some commitments in that meeting. It wasn't just about saying why one entity should not have management of this, this school and, and control or in, in responsibility for the education of the students. It was talking about why we, as MNPS, were better equipped, better prepared, more strategically aligned to deliver on high-quality education commitment that we've made to all students in MNPS. So I, I do want to point out a couple of things that this also does. Yes, it's absolutely historic. Yes, it does put a zone school, middle school there, but it creates a pathway. And that's been a long complaint, right, for our, our parents who've invested in a certain model of education, whether it's Padilla, whether it's Montessori, and we've closed those gaps. And this is just another opportunity to close a pathway gap that we haven't had previously. So, you know, there's just one more way to back it up and we got to back it up one more time into an elementary school experience. But I have tremendous faith in the creativity of our leader. And, and this is definitely creative. And I will tell you, when Dr. Battle puts her thinking cap on, it's strap yourself in. I know you all have experienced it. I've experienced it. Catch me from the left. Dr. Gentry, you got a minute? Hmm, I don't know. And it's, it's, I have an idea. I've been thinking. And that's what she does. She thinks about what's best. She strategizes around what's, what's the correct approach, always with the end in mind, right? So my quip-y comments and statements I love to make is begin with the end in mind. And so I am excited and looking forward to just seeing that, that backwards planning to get us to the outcomes we want, right? So looking at a middle school student who is prepared for high school courses and giving them that opportunity to have that experience within the comfort and the support of the, the faculty and staff that they're accustomed to, but the challenge that they're prepared for. And then we get to do that at some point in time. Unfortunately, I don't think it'll be before August, the whatever of 2024. But I look forward to seeing this replicated in an elementary school space so that we, parents have that investment and that understanding of what that experience for their child will look like over a 12-year, 13-year commitment and investment and, and confidence, expressive confidence in what we're able to do for their students. So I also want to give a super, super high-five thank you to Dr. Beard for taking on this challenge because not only is it new in what it does and how it's designed, she's leaving a space of, she's leaving Alex Green on a high note. Like she could ride that wave forever, right? But taking her, the willingness, and I do believe again, that comes from not only Dr. Battle but our chiefs who support our, from the support hub, who support our schools in the ways that they do, that let her know that we've got her back as she's stepping out on faith and bringing her talents and her skills to Brick Church Middle. So again, thank you to everyone for getting us to this point and I look forward to contributing and supporting however I can to get this off the ground, moving forward. And I'm looking forward to the meeting on the 29th.
Thank you. Do you have anything else?
Okay.
Well, thank you, Chief Perry, and thank you for all that information. We are very excited to see what will surely be a successful transition. And I appreciate all the strategic thought and shoring up that pathway as mentioned by Dr. Gentry. That gets us to public participation. For public participation, we have a new timer, if you've been here before. So the new timer is right here on the corner and it has the two minutes listed there so you can see it. Additionally, you may notice on the podium in your top left-hand corner. Thank you, Dr. Norris. Thank you. There is, there, it's, it's lit. So when the time starts, it will turn green. When you get to 30 seconds, no, you get to one minute, it will turn yellow. When you get to 30 seconds, it will start flashing. And then when you're at the end of your two minutes, it will turn red. So again, it turns green when your time starts, turns yellow just as a warning, hey, you've got half your time left. It flashes so you know you've got 30 seconds to find your end and then it turns red. It's a new light system and of course, this is our first meeting where we have two minutes. It does have an alarm that I feel like I need to warn you about. The alarm is loud. Historically, if you've been here before, the alarm is a bell and frankly, almost charming, particularly in comparison to the screech that comes from that. So it has a loud, like, just to warn you of that, so you're aware. So we have 20 people that have signed up for public participation. Again, each speaker has two minutes. The time is displayed on the clock on the podium. A green light appears and then we have the one-minute, 30-minute reminders. And then we have, it is a legitimate buzzer at the end of that. So we have the list up here. If you would like to go ahead and get in line, you're welcome to. We're going to start first with Megan Gary. Oh, I should go through while quickly while Megan's coming up here. You do not, if you could tell us what district you live in, that would be great. You do not need to provide any personal identifying information. So you do not need to share with us where you live, but if you will, please confirm who you are, giving us your name. And if you know what district you live in, if you will, please tell us that. That would be grateful. Thank you.
Good evening, Chair Elrod, members of the Board, Dr. Battle. My name is Megan Gary and I'm the lead applicant of Encompass Community School. I'm a resident of 37211 and I live in School Board District 7. I'm here today with the Encompass team and many of our supporters to kindly seek your consideration for our application to OPUS Encompass Community School. The purpose of charter law in Tennessee is to transform outcomes between higher and lower performers by bringing new-to-us but evidence-based models to our community. And Encompass is just that. Our mastery-based Morningside model departs from a traditional, time-based factory approach where all kids get the same content regardless of previous mastery, a model that has perpetuated generations of outcome disparities, particularly for students of color and those impacted by poverty. Instead, our model meets learners where they are and provides them with the content they need when they need it and until they master it. Furthermore, our proposed model accelerates growth for all students to achieve grade-level mastery and beyond. This is the definition of equity and it's in part why our model has resonated with so many families. It's one thing to be really excited about this model in theory, but another thing entirely to prove it works. Luckily, we have decades of research showing that it does. All five core components of our model have been empirically validated across demographic groups over the last six decades. There are randomized controlled trial studies across demographic groups. There are, that challenge beliefs of socioeconomic status and disability status where driving low student achievement that have shown that each element of our model and when combined, has an outsized impact on student learning. This model has been replicated widely in diverse settings, including ones that mirror our desired location. We are eager to partner with you. Thank you all. Or is that my warning?
That is the.
That's my time. Thank you all so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Megan. All right, that gets us to Thomas Rose.
Good evening, Chair, members of the Board, Dr. Battle. I reside in the 37208 community. I am a founding Board Member of Encompass Community School. I live in Nash, North Nashville. I've lived there for 20 years. I stand before you today to illuminate the deep desire and support we have received for the opening of Encompass Community School in our community. To date, we have knocked on doors over 600 or close to 600 doors in the North Nashville area, including Chatham Place, Cumberland View, Buena Vista and more. As you can see, many of these families stand with me today, expressing their unwavering support for Encompass. After hundreds of hours of listening, talking to families and totals of individuals, still counting, we've heard loudly that families are looking for an option that provides a personalized learning approach for all students and a school that is more importantly located within their neighborhood. With 372 families eager to enroll their students and over 175 of those eligible for proposed opening grand bands, our momentum only continues to grow. We acknowledge the decline in enrollment trends, not just nationally, but citywide, but specifically within our proposed community of North Nashville. However, it's crucial to recognize that the data fails to capture our families' true sentiments and needs across the zone schools in our proposed community. An average of 54% of families are opting out of their school zones, 54%. Want to say that. And this is data from MNPS 2022. This data is compelling. Our heart and our desire is to see a school in the North Nashville area. Um, our heart and our desire is to see a school in the North Nashville area that will cater to the kids that we have individually, um, and that we will reach them in a way that they've never seen before. Um, new ways, and we want to work with MNPS to do this. This is something that we desire to do, uh, with Encompass School. We really do appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you. Number three, we have Natalie Hall. Natalie Hall? Okay. That brings us on to number four, which is Charlene. Oh, are you Natalie or Charlene?
No, I'm Charlene.
That's right. Okay.
You're good.
All right. Thank you so much.
Evening. I'm Charlene Pulbertson. I live in 37013, but work in 37207. Four points will be made in the next two minutes. Number one, whomever decided to cut public participation to 20 minutes is a disgrace. You clearly don't want to serve this community because you don't want to hear the community. And it'd be nice for them to share their why. Two, I have to give up my teaching, time teaching my pre-K students because I have to ask them, which emoji do you feel like, followed by a question that is above their comprehension level, AKA sewn to grow? I spend my planning time doing attendance plans and other administrative tasks instead of prepping for my students. That's just the tip of the iceberg for me. The stories from K-12 are worse. Data meetings, coach meetings, navigators. When are teachers supposed to plan to teach if they are drowning in paperwork and their planning times are taken over by data meetings? Just to start. We are contracted employees with salaries. We don't get extra money for working over contracted hours. But how are we supposed to plan for our teaching when the time meant for planning is constantly used for other things if we don't come in early and leave late? Number three, not only do your employees work over their contracted hours, your teachers are struggling to afford to live in the city they serve. I've been awake since 3:00 AM because I open Starbucks multiple days a week, which means I clock in at 4:00 AM to clock out at 7:00 AM to make it to Schwab Elementary to greet my 20 pre-K students at 7:45. Now I'm here, still going despite leaving my house at 3:30 AM. I'm one story. Ask any employee at an MNPS school what their second job is, because at this point, it isn't an if, it is a guarantee. Finally, number four, with the recent passage of the Army Teachers Bill, the community wants to know Dr. Plan's battle regarding this legislation. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that gets us to number five, Jeffrey Berry.
Good evening. My name is Jeffrey Berry. I live in District Three. I am CEO of Tennessee Environmental Council. We are a statewide nonprofit organization founded in 1970. We work on environmental issues, improving our environment. I'm here to support the Earth Day Resolution that is before you all tonight, and I look forward to working with you once you pass the resolution, working with you to expand pollinator habitats on metro campuses. It's something that we've been doing, uh, for the past three years as an organization. We now have over 20 pollinator habitat gardens, beautiful wildflower gardens that attract native bees and butterflies. And we have over 20 gardens on eight campuses now, including Stratford STEM, including MLK and, um, many others, Hillsborough High School. And we have a lot of interest from more and more schools, so we would like to continue to expand that and build a process, um, to help make this opportunity available for all schools. We do all the fundraising and organizing of these gardens, uh, we just need the approvals to do that. And we've been working with all the administrators on that process. We're also supporting expanding composting for school cafeterias. There are four schools I know of where the school started up composting the cafeteria on their own, did the fundraising to make that happen. Uh, these are incredible ecological opportunities, environmental improvement opportunities. In this day and age, they're so critical to raise our children with these values. And there are also incredible STEM learning opportunities. We have had, um, we've instant, um, put in some STEM learning activities at our gardens in partnership with the Nashville Zoo to study the migration patterns of the monarchs that are visiting the guard, the gardens at these schools, working with students in that process. So, uh, thank you for considering this resolution, and I look forward to working with you, uh, forming a working group to look at the sustainability opportunities on all metro school campuses. Both my daughters have gone through Rosebank Steam, Stratford, West End, Aiken, MLK, and soon-to-be Hillsborough, so look forward to working with you all.
Thank you. That gets us to Isabella Fox Tharp. Isabella? All right, Mary Jo Cram.
Good evening. My name is Mary Jo Cram. I'm the Secretary Treasurer of MNEA, PACE Committee Chair, a 15-year teacher at the Academy of Old Cockrell, and the parent of two children at Dan Mills Elementary School. When I heard that the school board was planning a budget for next year that gives teachers a cost of living adjustment that is lower than the inflation rate the district is using to calculate increases in other budget items, I was shocked and dismayed. If other parts of the MNPS budget are growing by 5%, but teacher salaries are only growing by 4%, that means that the teacher's portion of the MNPS budget, our piece of the pie, is shrinking. If inflation is 5% and teachers have to buy things that are going up in price by that amount, but our salaries are only increasing by 4%, that means we will have less buying power, so our salaries are effectively going down. If the district is willing to increase the amount of funding for supplies, but not for teachers, that tells us we are valued less than paper towels, and frankly, that is insulting. I understand that this is a tough budget year, but we hear that almost every year. It's very frustrating. Teachers would rather the school board ask for more than city council can give us and make them tell you no than ask for so much less than what we need. That is the only way we will know that we got the maximum amount of funding that the city is able to give us. Thank you.
That gets us to Shane Moore.
Good evening, school board members. My name is Shane Moore. I'm a teacher at Dupont Hadley Middle School, and I live in District Three. I'm the advocacy co-chair for MNEA. As you are aware, Nashville is becoming increasingly more expensive, and a teacher's ability to live and thrive in this community is being threatened because our salaries are not keeping up with inflation and general crop cost of living. The teacher wage gap is continuing to widen, and we need your help to close it. In this lean budget year, difficult decisions are going to have to be made, but I am asking for your commitment in making teacher pay a priority. This is why I believe the conversation around educator pay needs to be about livability. What good is it to be the highest paid in the state if it's not enough to live with dignity? Teachers can't develop highly effective lesson plans if they're working a second job to survive. Teachers can't provide extra help and truly know their students if they're commuting hours to and from work each day. This board has a duty to ensure teachers can live in the community we serve, or at the very least, advocate like heck for us. Our current campaign asks district leaders and metro government to fully support our MNPS schools by ensuring respectful compensation. MNEA members and potential members have united around the following. A 10% cost of living adjustment. A request that 90% of our healthcare premiums are covered by the district. A compensation structure that respects veteran teachers. Fully fund all of our bereavement days, and please somehow, some way, make it so that our pay doesn't get eaten up immediately by insurance costs. Not to work to try to get us as close to these numbers as possible would be nothing more than complicit in the education wage gap. I have seen more good teachers leave the profession in the last few years than any other time as my, in my 17 years as an educator. Salary and workload are almost always cited. I worry this district is trading long ster, long-term stability for short-term successes. Educators must be treated as the primary foundational element for student success, not vendors, not the newest software program, program, not the newest initiative, but teachers and counselors and support staff, all of the people on the front lines that are actually making sure every child is known. Thank you.
Thank you. That gets us to Julia, Julia Trudel. Julia? All right, next is Andrea. Andrea? Do we have the same list? We don't see that on the list. Can we move that up? There we go. Thank you. Andrea? Anybody? There we go.
Greetings, Madam Chair, school board members, director, and thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name is Dr. Andrea Sykes Pointer, and I will serve as the Executive Director for Nurses Middle College Nashville. Briefly, I want to discuss my background and how it speaks to the mission of Nurses Middle College, and in what way Nurses Middle College will be complementary to our MNPS school system and our higher education community and our robust healthcare community in Nashville. I've been a nurse for over 17 years, and I've had the privilege of serving as a nursing professor for the last 10 years, working to prepare competent, compassionate, and patient advocating nurses for this healthcare, while also offering a mentoring program for high school students through the support of a federal grant. If you've had any encounter in the healthcare system, you've likely felt the effects of the nursing shortage and the lack of diversity amongst nurses. Nurses Middle College can change that, and I want to be a part of that change with compliment with to the MN, what MNPS is currently doing to expose students to healthcare careers through opportunities like the academies of Nashville and collabor, in a collaborative teamwork effort, not competition. Why teamwork? Because if you know nursing, then you know that one of the pillars of nursing is holistic patient care, meaning I need everyone that's on my healthcare team winning and prospering so that I know that my patients are prospering. Nurses Middle College works with the diverse and underserved communities to offer a hands-on high school experience where nursing students can gainfully, get gainfully employed as certified CNAs by 11th grade year. Directed mission into nursing programs in our Nashville universities and the opportunity to successfully finish a nursing program more competent, uh, prepared, and confident in their roles and their abilities, which helps with their professional identity and retention in nursing. In closing, thank you again for your time and consideration, and I believe that we can work together in pursuit of Nurses Middle Colleges' mission to offer a high-quality, nursing-focused option for the public school students and build diversity in nursing. Thank you.
That gets us to Bobby Lynn. Bobby Lynn?
My name is Bobby Lynn Negron. I live in District 16. I'm an art teacher at Paragon Mills, member of MNEA, and your Teacher of the Year. First, thank you for allowing public comment, especially as more of our democratic rights are being suppressed at our state arrest and handcuffs, mothers sitting with signs at the Capitol, and journalists are arrested by Vanderbilt Police. I'm here today for the students who expect me to defend public education. I'm here for the 900-plus teachers and support staff that haven't applied or are not returning to public education because they can't afford to live in Nashville. I am here today to agitate, educate, and organize when we are hearing that our city officials and the mayor want to give teachers and supports that 4% wage increase, and we should be expected to take it politely, say thank you, while Amazon receives tax breaks and the Titans a new stadium. I am here today for the names on the petitions in the bag who cannot be here today because they're preparing dinner for their kids, taking care of their elderly parents before grading papers, or unfortunately, driving to their second job just to make ends meet. I am here for Ms. Phelps, who has a second-grade class of 28 students and will stay late every day grading papers and extra paperwork. She couldn't finish because her planning was cut short, and yet still makes time to teach her students chess club. I am here for Dwayne, our bus driver, who picks up and brings our students to school and home with joy and who sign our petition in solidarity. I learned early in my life from mi abuelo, if, that if you want something, you gotta fight for it with your heart. And like Faye Ringo said, if someone says you can't, then do more of it. There is something in the air that feels different in Tennessee. I don't know if it's the UAW victory by the VW workers in Chattanooga, or the fact that Tennessee rural and urban public school educators and parents defeated Governor Lee's voucher scheme, but I see hope and truly believe that when people are treated with dignity, paid dignified wages, can pay the rent without breaking the bank, and whose working conditions set us up for success, our community flourishes. I ask the school board members to fight with their heart for our public schools and people who work and learn in them. When I say we want, you say 10.
Thank you. All right, that gets us to Ms. Williams.
Hello. Thank you, Chairwoman, Superintendent Dr. Battle, and the board for allowing me to discuss my support for Nurses Middle College Nashville. My name is Dr. Mamie Williams, and I serve as the Chair of the Nurses Middle College Nashville. I currently also serve as the Director for DEI at Vanderbilt Health. I'm a believer in public education, having been exclusively taught both my bachelor's and master's as well by public education. I'm also a believer in the power of education in Nashville, um, and the ways in which we can prepare students for healthcare careers. Um, I joined the Nurses Middle College because of, in the nursing profession, we are in desperate need for high-quality public education opportunities that knock down barriers and reach a diverse population of students. I believe in Nurses Middle College because they've shown students in other states that nursing isn't out of their reach, that it provides students in grades nine through 12 the opportunity to receive an education that leads to a healthcare career. Nurses Middle College, schools are transformative, they're accessible environments, and meet the kids where they are and get them to where they want to be, even kids who need a little extra support academically. I believe in the Nurses Middle College Nashville, Nashville school would be complementary to our MNPS system and the current efforts in place to expose students to careers in healthcare and the work-based learning. I've been fortunate to partner with MNPS Healthcare Career Academies in both mentorship programs and healthcare, um, outreach from, um, Vanderbilt Health in grades nine through 12. And between the academies that Nashville, um, MP, MNPS offers and the work of Nurses Middle College, we can hopefully tackle this extremely painful nursing shortage in middle Tennessee. Nurses Middle College brings a public education model that has been effective for more than 13 years and proven in other states. So I will continue to work to grow Nashville Nurses Middle College. Thank you for listening. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Tucker?
Good evening. My name is Dwayne Tucker, and I'm the CEO of Lead Public Schools. I'm here today to speak in support of Lead's applications for, to open two elementary charter schools, Lead Cameron Elementary and Lead Southeast Elementary. Lead has had the privilege of serving middle and high school students across Nashville for more than 15 years. We currently have two middle and two high schools authorized through MNPS. During our tenure, our schools have shown significant academic growth, earning rewards, school status, Level Five and T-Vas for multiple years. Although our students have grown tremendously during their time at Lead, the majority of our students are already two or three years behind when they come to us at middle school. We want to reach those students earlier so we can get them on a path to success sooner. Our goal is to expand our work to the elementary tier to provide families and consistent K-12 pathway, pathway at Lead. And that is why we are applying to open two new elementary schools that feed into our existing middle schools. To prepare for this expansion to the elementary tier, we have invested in building a team of elementary experts ready to take on the challenge of opening new schools in underserved communities. Led by Dr. Ricky Gibbs, this team is made up of some of the best elementary talent in Nashville, and with their leadership, I am confident in Lead's ability to create successful elementary schools. I ask that you allow us the opportunity to create a consistent K-12 experience for our students at Lead by voting to approve Lead Cameron and Lead Southeast Elementaries. Thank you for your time.
Dr. Gibbs?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Battle. I'm Dr. Ricky Gibbs II, and I have the honor and privilege of serving as Head of Schools for Elementary with Lead Public Schools. Over the last 18 years, I have dedicated my professional career to elementary-age children in MNPS. I'm here tonight to share with you why the approval of Lead Cameron Elementary and Lead Southeast Elementary is the right thing to do for families in Nashville. Lead currently serves students in grades five through 12, and it's our desire to partnership with our families by offering them an elementary option at Lead. We are deeply committed to the communities we already serve, which is why we have submitted applications to open elementary schools that will benefit the South Nashville and Southeast Nashville communities. We have worked in these communities for more than a decade and understand what these students and families need to be successful. If approved, these schools will provide elementary feeder, feeder patterns to Lead Cameron Middle and Lead Southeast Middle, creating a consistent educational experience from kindergarten through graduation for Lead scholars. Similarly, as Dr. Gentry discussed earlier, this will create a K-12 pathway at Lead, which is our goal, but it's also the desire of our families. Over the years, our families have increasingly voiced the need for a Lead Elementary School, and more than 200 of our current families have already confirmed their interest in sending their children to a Lead, to Lead Cameron Elementary or to Lead Southeast Elementary. I ask that you listen to the desire of our families and vote to approve the applications for Lead Cameron Elementary and Lead Southeast Elementary. Thank you.
Thank you. That gets us to Ms. Jarrett Thorpe.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Battle. My name is Stephanie Jarrett Thorpe, and I'm a member of the Lead Public Schools Elementary Team. I've worked and served in elementary schools for over 20 years, and I'm ready to serve as the founding principal of one of the two elementary schools up for approval tonight. I am here to tell you- I am here to tell you about who Lead is as an organization and why you should approve our applications for Lead Cameron Elementary and Lead Southeast Elementary. At Lead, we're preparing leaders who will thrive academically, socially, and emotionally. Our ethos is the foundation of everything we do. They provide a common understanding of expectations and behaviors for our community of students, families, teachers, and staff. Our ethos is made up of five core values: commitment, courage, discipline, service of others, and self-reliance. We use these to govern ourselves in alignment with our mission of ready for college, ready for life. Students at Lead learn how commitment helps them to achieve their goals. They are encouraged to be courageous so they can stand up for what they believe in and feel confident while doing it. We teach students to be disciplined by making intentional decisions about their schoolwork and behavior so they can grow. All of our students know the value of serving others and what it means to be an active and positive member of their school community. We emphasize self-reliance to help our students build confidence in themselves so they can go out into the world and be successful. At Lead Elementary Schools, our ethos will be a core component of our model. All of these values are vital to a student's success, and we believe it is essential for students to learn these in their foundational years at school. Please give us the opportunity to build this foundation with our students and vote to approve Lead Cameron Elementary and Lead Southeast Elementary. Thank you.
Ms. Lawrence.
Good evening, Dr. Adrian Battle, Chair Elrod, and members of the Board. My name is Rosalie Lawrence, and I'm a sophomore at Hillsborough High School. I'm here tonight on behalf of Sunrise Hillsborough, which is part of a larger national sunrise movement. In the past, I've spoken about Sunrise's goals and demands, but I thought it would be more fitting to celebrate the culmination of our Earth Day resolution by letting everyone in on my personal journey to becoming a climate activist. Though it can be difficult to pinpoint when I started caring about sustainability, my family's dedication to composting was definitely a major factor. I have been fortunate enough to grow up with a compost bin in my kitchen, fresh garden fruits on my plate, and enriched soil in my backyard. But my sustainable upbringing led me to falsely believe that everyone had access to these resources. My own comfort shielded me from the fact that I was one in a million. For the first time, I realized that my definition of ordinary, where I assumed everyone had a garden and access to composting practices, was anything but ordinary. I could have felt defeated by the fact that there were so many obstacles to the path of living sustainably, but instead I let the goal of promoting environmental equity become my new priority in life. I joined Sunrise Hillsborough in search of a passionate community of environmental activists, and the organization has exceeded my expectations. With a band of inspiring young people behind me, I feel hopeful that my personal goals will be met someday soon. And so I believe that tonight is the someday soon of my dreams. The Earth Day Resolution up for discussion tonight outlines an encouraged level of support for composting initiatives and MNPS schools from the school board members. We commend MNPS as a whole for all the work they have already done in terms of sustainability, but we urge you consider voting yes on an even more sustainable future for all. Thank you for all your support thus far, and have a wonderful evening.
Mr. Luckins.
Hello, Dr. Adrian Battle, Chair Elrod, and members of the Board. My name is Hayden Legends, and I'm a sophomore at Hillsborough High School. I'm a member of Sunrise Hillsborough, which is part of the larger Sunrise National. I'm here to discuss the Earth Day Resolution, specifically pollinator gardens, and why I believe they are important. Pollinator gardens are important to me because they allow me to feel more connected to my community. When I first joined Sunrise, I was expecting to make a more systemic change, but pollinator gardens allowed me to make a physical one. Pollinator gardens can also allow hundreds of other kids to feel the same connection by allowing them to learn through nature and participate in environmental conservation efforts. They have a positive impact on the people involved with them and have an amazing effect on the environment. They help native species of plants grow and thrive, they help different pollinators thrive, and they make an environment more biodiverse. At Hillsborough, which I attend, we recently planted a pollinator garden. Not only was this experience fun for everyone involved, but it was also personally important to me. It was so important to me because I felt that I had an impact on not only my club's movement, but a portion of the earth itself. Although we only planted 800 square feet, it was technically helping the earth as a whole due to pollinator gardens providing native plants and pesticide-free habitats. These gardens help maintain diverse and healthy ecosystems throughout the world, which is crucial for the health of our planet. I would like to thank you all for allowing us and other schools to build these gardens, but challenge you to help us make more by passing the Earth Day Resolution so other students can connect and learn the same way I have. Thank you for your time.
Will you give us your name, please?
Hudson Mills.
You're Hudson Mills?
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Good evening, Dr. Adrian Battle, Chair Elrod, and members of the Board. My name is Hudson Mills, and I am a member of the student organization Sunrise Hillsborough. First, I'd like to talk about why I personally want to advocate for this change, and why I joined Sunrise Hillsborough, and why I even care in the first place. It all began with the opening ceremony of the Olympic Games in Rio in 2016. My third-grade teacher had told us that as part of our homework, we should tune into the spectacular event, and what I saw scared me more than anything else. One of the acts performed was production centered around our earth's changing climate and all the disasters that had resulted. Seeing this, I was shocked. I had asked my mom, what was going on? Was what I just saw real? Would we be okay? By the end, I was in tears, scared for the future. I felt there was no escaping. But since then, through the teaching of MNPS and the amazing teachers I've had so far, I've learned so much about sustainability efforts, energy conservation, and ways for me to advocate. As soon as I heard about Sunrise Hillsborough, I knew that that was the place I needed to be and that I could make a difference. I have really enjoyed the work Sunrise and the school board have done so far culminating in the Earth Day Resolution up for consideration today. I would like to commend MNPS on their extraordinary efforts thus far in increased energy efficiency in schools. Sunrise Hillsborough is already very grateful for the work being done to ensure energy efficiency in our district, from the Lead certified schools recently built to the MNPS Energy Team and their amazing transparency through the Energy Usage Dashboard. I hope that this district will continue this work through the Earth Day Resolution to ensure a sustainable future for our schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Hudson. That gets us to Sophia Rose. That's you. That's okay, Sophia.
All right, here we go. Good evening, Dr. Adrian Battle, Chair Elrod, and members of the Board. My name is Sophia Payne, and I am a senior at Hillsborough High School and one of the leaders of Sunrise Hillsborough, which is an environmental advocacy club at Hillsborough High School. Today, I wanted to talk to you about my personal journey about becoming an environmental activist, which is definitely something I would have never imagined myself doing. I remember when I was in elementary school, I was part of a Girl Scout troop. And there was this one day that we went outside and planted a tree, which, you know, is not a very typical thing for an elementary schooler. And it was just very inspiring, and I knew that what we were doing was important, even though it was one little tree. But I wasn't really sure, like, how important it was. So fast forward to my seventh-grade year. In my science class, we watched the documentary No Impact Man. And when we watched this documentary, I was just in shock. Very similar to Hudson, I had a moment where I was like, oh my God, our earth is dying. Why is no one doing enough about it? And I realized that a lot of the issues we're seeing around anthropogenic climate change, which I will elaborate on a little bit in a moment, are mostly human-based, and it is our fault that these issues are happening. So anthropogenic climate change I want to elaborate on. That is when there has been an increase in temperatures overall, and it is not normal because it doesn't follow the normal trajectory of the climate. And so that brings me to Sunrise Hillsborough. I went to a training in Philadelphia during my junior year because I needed an outlet, and I realized that that was where I wanted to be. And so I would like you all to vote yes on the Earth Day Resolution to leave a legacy for generations to come between you and Sunrise Hillsborough.
Thank you. And then that gets us to Amanda.
Good evening, Dr. Adrian Battle, Chair Elrod, and members of the Board. My name is Amanda Gualda, and I'm a sophomore at Hillsborough High School. I'm here tonight on behalf of Sunrise Hillsborough, which is a part of the larger national sunrise movement. Sustainability has always played a big role in my life. Having two environmental science professors as my parents, I've grown up learning about the human actions that caused the climate disaster we are currently facing and what we can do as individuals to help the situation as best we can. My parents have always composted, recycled, and chosen to bike places rather than drive. As a child, I assumed that everyone else had grown up with this lifestyle. It was devastating for me to realize that some people do not even believe in climate change or know that it exists. This realization added a weight on top of my shoulders that I was unable to understand until recently. Now sustainability education has become one of my main focuses as I grow as an activist for the climate disaster. I was drawn to Sunrise National because this was one of their focuses as well. I want to thank the school board for all the work you have done towards making our district greener. We appreciate the work you have done with compostable lunch trays and making all new constructions Lead certified. I would also like to thank you for all the support you guys have offered throughout the year as we wrote our Earth Day Resolution. Today, I ask all of you not to only think of the victories we have had with sustainability in the past, but to also think of what we still have yet to accomplish. Specifically speaking, on sustainability education, we urge that you provide more opportunities for students to learn about the climate crisis and its environmental effects in schools. Thank you for your time, and I urge you all to vote yes on the Earth Day Resolution.
Thank you. Thank you so much. That gets us to the end of public participation. Let me... Thank you. All right. That gets us to our consent agenda. We are going to be voting on the consent agenda, but of course removing A1C, which is that resolution, we'll be discussing it second. So may I have a motion in a second? Second. All right, it's been first and seconded. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All right, passes unanimously. Thank you so much. That gets us to the consent agenda of item A1C, which is a resolution recognizing Earth Day. I need a motion for that.
Go ahead and read the... You have to make a motion to...
She's got to read first, I don't know when she's moving.
Oh, true.
She can't make a motion to approve something.
Go ahead and read them. Thank you. So first, I want to start by recognizing and thanking all the students who are here tonight from Sunrise Hillsborough, Sunrise Nashville, our friends from the Tennessee Environmental Council. I want to take a moment to make a special recognition as well of Mr. Bullyjack. Is Mr. Bullyjack still here? Who is the... He is the teacher who is the club sponsor for the Sunrise Nashville Club as well at Hillsborough. I also want to thank all of those in MNPS who have been working on sustainability for years and those folks who have been working with the district, but in particular, want to thank Chief Sullivan and her team for the work that they've done over the last few years. And then I'll read the resolution in a second here, but just wanted to acknowledge that we've made a few changes since the version that is in the agenda. Mostly those are to make it evergreen for us, meaning that we will have some things in here, make sure that we're sort of, we're being broad around some of the things that we're doing. So those are highlighted for you all, and you will hear them as I read through them. The finalized version will appear in the minutes, assuming that we get a motion and a second and a good discussion and passing. The finalized version would be in the minutes of the next, from this meeting, which will appear in the agenda of the next meeting, if that makes sense. Okay, and with that, I will go ahead and read this, and so everyone bear with me because it will take a minute. So a resolution recognizing Earth Day 2024, celebrating progress being made for climate sustainability in Metro Nashville Public Schools and identifying ongoing opportunities. Whereas April 22nd, 2024 celebrates Earth Day across the globe, and whereas Earth Day was first celebrated on April 22nd, 1970, and whereas Earth Day is an annual event promoting environmental citizenship year-round, and whereas Earth Day encourages environmental action around the world, reminding people to find ways to protect the environment and live sustainably, including managing their own environmental impact, and whereas schools have made a tremendous opportunity, schools have a tremendous opportunity to support students to become leaders in making the earth and their own community a healthier and more ecologically sustainable place, and whereas student leaders, as we've seen, are actively engaging in their schools, the district, and their community to promote climate awareness and a more sustainable Nashville, and whereas over the past three years, Metro Nashville Public Schools has taken an aggressive approach to energy, conservation, and sustainability, with an initial focus related to energy waste and conservation, including the formation of MMPS Energy, a collaboration of district staff and community energy experts. And whereas to date, the combined efforts of MMPS Energy have resulted in an annual reduction of 20% in energy consumption, which equates to 260,000 metric tons of annual carbon emission reduction into the environment, and whereas MMPS Energy has focused all new construction and major renovations designed and built to a minimum Lead Silver or Gold standard, ensured all HVAC and other capital improvements are designed and installed to meet current ASHRAE and energy standards, installed solar energy production at Lawson High School, White's Creek High School, McMurray Middle School, geothermal HVAC system installations at Cambridge High School, Goodlettville Elementary, Lawson High School, and a green roof at Lawson High School. And whereas the Tennessee Environmental Council has worked with school administrators to install 20 pollinator gardens using solely native plants at 15 MMPS schools since fall 2020, including Stratford High, MLK, sorry, Martin Luther King Jr., Magnet, Hillsborough High School, and more, and there is growing interest from more and more MMPS schools to install pollinator gardens on their campus. And whereas several schools, including Westmead Elementary, Buena Vista Elementary, Witsit Elementary, Creve Hall Elementary, Lachlan Design Center, have installed gardens and/or outdoor classrooms that support STEM learning and expose students to sustainability concepts at an earlier age, and whereas MMPS has begun including sustainability-focused classes and pathways across the district, including IB Environmental Systems and Societies, AP Environmental Science, Environmental Science, with growing interest among students in both high school and earlier, and final warehouse. Whereas according to Environmental Defense Fund, the demand for sustainability-minded professionals is growing exponentially in almost all industries, and expanding sustainability concepts taught in both science and non-science MMPS core classes, as well as augmenting the number of green career options represented in district-wide and school-specific career fairs would prepare students for a variety of careers focused on climate, justice, and equity. Therefore, be it resolved that we, the Metropolitan Nashville Board of Education, recognize April 22nd as Earth Day each school year, and furthermore, pledge to support student leaders in an equitable transition to a sustainable Metro Nashville Public School District, support and encourage the continued work of MMPS Energy to reduce the carbon footprint of the district through green building and transportation efforts, support collaborative sustainability efforts across MMPS departments and schools, support and encourage the continuation of existing food redistribution, pollinator gardens, and composting initiatives, encourage connections between student leaders, parents, faculty, school PTSOs, and knowledgeable local environmental organizations such as Urban Green Lab, Tennessee Environmental Council, and the Compost Company, encourage efforts at our schools and other facilities to reduce waste, food waste in landfills, and increase diversion of paper and cardboard recyclables, encourage student groups or clubs that focus on sustainability, support the incorporation of sustainability concepts for student learning by making meaningful connections to existing curriculum, and pushing for more sustainability curriculum to be included in state standards when possible, and encourage our staff and schools to continue to recognize the importance of environmental stewardship and education year-round. This would be adopted by the elected Board of Metropolitan Nashville Board of Education on the 23rd of April, 2024, and with this resolution would take immediate effect the public welfare requiring it. And now I would like to make a motion that we approve the resolution as written here and read, and as will be presented in the minutes for the meeting.
Second. Right, it's been first and seconded. Any discussion? Senior Board Member.
I just want to say that I think that this resolution is very, very important, and I think that it is a great first step to continuing the partnership between the Board and our students and Sunrise Hillsborough and the overall Sunrise Movement. I'm very proud of all of the Sunrise Hillsborough students and all of the MNPS students who have advocated on behalf of ours... have advocated on behalf of ours, our city and our environment. And I just think it's very important that we acknowledge, we acknowledge students, and we can see that this is a very strong desire of our students. And so I think it's important that we listen, and I think that by passing this resolution, I'd be doing that.
Member Tyler?
Yes, thank you for that. I also want to say that I think this is a really good first step towards working towards making MMPS more sustainable. I think we have long, for decades, seen pockets of people working towards sustainability throughout the district, in schools all over, from very edges to the middle and back out again. But they've all been piecemeal. And so what I hope to see from something like this is to get our focus together so that we're able to support all schools who want to have this, and we can give them the tools that they need to get started towards more sustainability, and we make it become part of the culture of the way MMPS works, and that this is just the way we do things because we have to. There's just no other choice at this point. So I'm very pleased with the advocacy that we've seen from Sunrise Hillsborough. I'm very pleased to hear from other students that have been reaching out as well, and I'm extremely excited to vote yes for this. And as my shirt says, we need to clean the seas, plant more trees, and save the bees. Thank you.
Are there any other comments, questions? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. All in favor of this resolution, raise your hand. It passes unanimously. Congratulations, Sunrise. Ready? Yes, thank you. All right, that gets us to consent agenda, consent agenda item A2. I need a motion to certify the charges of dismissal that were included in our packet. So moved. Do you have a second? Second. Right, it's been first and seconded. Do I have any discussion? Okay. Seeing none, all those in favor of certifying the charges of dismissal, please raise your hand. All right, that's unanimous. Thank you so much. And that gets us to consent agenda item. I'm gonna say it right, the right consent agenda item. A1, nope, A3, excuse me. So those are charter school applications, and to start those, I will turn it over to Dr. Battle, so we can have those discussions.
Madam Chair, members of the board, and Director Battle, thank you for the opportunity to share the MMPS Charter Schools Office Review Team reports on five New Star charter applications. This evening, we will present the findings of those New Star charter applications received.
Thank you for waiting while we get the presentation up.
Should we take a recess?
All right. Thank you.
Next slide. Oh. That's right. Sorry. Thank you. The MMPS Charter School Office received five New Star applications. We do want to note that this cycle of New Star applications includes an MMP, an MMPS existing operator with LEED public schools. Tonight, the board has the following voting options for the applications received. Approve or deny each New Star application. State law states upon receipt of the grounds for denial, the sponsor does have 30 days from receipt to submit an amended application to correct the deficiencies. The LEA will have 60 days from receipt of an amended application to deny or to approve the amended application. The MMPS Charter School Office is responsible for ensuring the quality authorizing for 27 existing charter schools. Leads the authorization process by coordinating internal and external experts to review each application and share the evidence findings reports with the MMPS Board of Education. The overall objective in the New Star application review process is to ensure review team members complete the following. Evaluate the New Star application using the published evaluation criteria from the Tennessee Department of Education. Incorporate capacity interview responses within the rating determination. Rate each section using the TDOE, the TDOE rating standards, and reach a consensus among the review team regarding the rating of each applicable section. The review and rating of the New Star applications consisted of a variety of members from multiple MMPS departments, as well as an external reviewer. MMPS review team members rated each applicable section of the New Star application within the following categories, as noted on the slide. The review team utilized the rubric by, provided by TDOE, to determine the rating for each section in the New Star application. The ratings included meets or exceeds standard, partially meets standard, and does not meet standard. As you know, the board could receive multiple types of charter applications within a year. The most common applications received are New Start and Renewal charter applications. I want to take this opportunity to provide a high-level overview and distinction of how each application is reviewed and rated by review members. As you can see on the flow chart, both New Start and Renewal charter applications are comprised of review members. Both applications include the review and rating of sections within the application, and both New Start and Renewal applications include a consensus rating where review members determine an overall rating for each section within the application. One distinction within the review process for New Star applications is review members will provide an overall summary rating for each applicable section. As indicated in the guidance from TDOE, for an application to be deemed eligible for approval, the summary ratings for all applicable categories must be meets or exceeds the standard. Please note, the MMPS Board of Education's vote makes the final determination on whether the application is approved or denied. We will begin with the New Star application for Encompass Community School. Encompass Community School is proposing a K-8 school with an enrollment cap of 468 students, focusing on mastery-based learning, whole child development, and a community school in the White's Creek and Pearl Cone clusters. I do want to note, these two clusters have historical lower enrollment than any other cluster in MMPS. In fact, in recent years, MMPS closed three schools due to low enrollment. The board report provided by the MMPS Charter School Office contains a comprehensive review of the evidence findings noted within each New Star application. For each application, I will highlight a few of the key areas of deficiencies identified for each section based on the rubric provided by TDOE and also listed within the board report. In academics, the White's Creek and Pearl Cone clusters have lower enrollment numbers compared to other MMPS clusters. In addition, not all identified curriculum materials are aligned to Tennessee state standards, and some proposed materials are aligned to Common Core, which is prohibited as outlined in state law. And lastly, the academic goals are not aligned to the historical data trends of the targeted clusters. In operations, the applicant provides a table of anticipated challenges and action plans, but does not adequately address the potential challenges of meeting the enrollment targets. The applicant included an unrealistic contingency plan that includes co-locating with a nonprofit organization or daycare. And lastly, the professional development plan provide, is provided. However, the plan does not adequately address special and diverse populations related to accommodations and modifications. In financial, the applicant does not have a high level of financial expertise on the network-based staff. The applicant appears to only forecast for 1% inflationary growth, which is below the recommended 2% to 3.5%. And lastly, the applicant intends to outsource many of its financial responsibilities, which can lead to limited organizational oversight. In portfolio review, performance record, this section was not applicable based on the category type and not reviewed or rated by review members. The review team determined the ratings for Encompass Community School as partially meets standard in each applicable section. I will turn it over to the board for the discussion and vote for the New Star application for Encompass Community School.
Thank you. I would like to make a motion to deny Encompass Charter School due to the school not meeting or exceeding the academic, operational, or financial standards when evaluated by the MMPS review team in accordance to the Tennessee Department of Education's ratings and evaluation guidance, and due to the deficiencies noted by the charter review team and the charter office board report. May I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. All right, let's have some discussion. Dr. Gentry, would you like to start us?
I will. I was prepared to make the motion, as this will impact District 1 as well as District 5. I thank you for the, the report. I also just want to reiterate what was shared as a part of the report, and I appreciate you including the enrollment challenges that are already a part of District 1's school. The only place to source students from would be from existing populations, existing school enrollment within the district, which would put us back in a conversation, potentially, assuming students, assuming that there are that number of families that would choose this upstart, that to my knowledge and to my review, is not offering anything significantly different from an academic approach, significantly different from student and parental engagement that is not already offered through MMPS programs such as our Navigator strategy, our overall strategy of all, every student known, and the ways in which our schools today are engaging with our parents, with our families, and our students. So again, primarily around enrollment impact to District 1 schools, and just want to highlight all of the great things that are currently happening in District 1 schools. Our schools are achieving. Our schools are meeting the academic needs of our families, of our students. They are engaging our students in ways that they have not been previously engaged. They are attending school. I don't know where the notion came from, that our students are not showing up and choosing our schools in District 1, but we are not having enrollment and attendance challenges significant enough to warrant looking outside of what we're offering to find another model that will engage our students in a different way. So I support the denial of this application.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. With the motion being first and seconded and having discussion, all of those in favor of denying this application, please raise your hand. Okay. Do you have it? It is not everybody. It is everybody, no. Thank you. Thank you so much. That gets us to our next one, please.
The next New Star application is Nashville School of Excellence. Nashville School of Excellence is proposing a 612 school with a STEM focus in the Nashville area with an enrollment cap of 750 students, focusing on Nolan's, Nolan'sville Road. In academics, the mission statement is not measurable, and the STEM education focus is not compelling, as this model is common in numerous existing MMPS schools. The schedule shows early release days every Wednesday, which does not meet the required six and a half hours of minimum attendance as outlined in state law. And lastly, the applicant neither clearly nor persuasively explains how the school's graduation requirements will ensure student readiness for college career or other post-secondary opportunities, especially to STEM-related fields. In operations, although the applicant notes a consideration of adding a Nashville parent, none of the board will be governing in Nashville, which could affect meaningful governance and oversight of school performance, operations, and financials. The renovation timeline is unrealistic, given the applicant only five months total to design and execute renovations. The applicant intends to procure one school bus for years one and two, and the proposal does not include transportation for special needs homeless or foster transportation. In financial planning capacity, the enrollment projections, projections for year one of 330 students are unreasonable based on the high concentration of current middle and high schools within the community in targeted area. The amounts budgeted for health insurance, equipment, and supplies are unreasonable for opening a school. And lastly, the application projects 52% of its population, which is approximately 170 students, will be English learner students, and staffing assumptions are unreasonable to meet the required ratio with only one budgeted position for year one. In portfolio review and performance record, the overall achievement percentages for the existing schools in the current portfolio are below proficiency. In addition, the current ACT scores are underperforming the MMPS average. And lastly, Memphis School of Excellence received a letter D and TVI score of 1 in 2023. The review team determined the rating for Nashville School of Excellence as partially meets standard in each applicable section. I will turn it over to the board for the discussion and vote for the New Star application for Nashville School of Excellence.
Thank you so much. I am going to make a motion to deny the Nashville School of Excellence due to that school not meeting or exceeding the academic, operational, financial, portfolio, and performance standards when evaluated by the MMPS review team in accordance to the Tennessee Department of Education's rating and evaluation guidance, and due to the deficiencies noted by the charter review team or the charter office board report. May I have a second? Second. Do we have discussion? May I start? Do you want to start with you? Because it's in our shared area of Nolan'sville Road. Okay. I, of course, have made my motion to deny. It is, of course, based upon all of the findings in academic, operational, financial, and portfolio performance. Not only is it below proficiency, but of course, inside that Nolan'sville area, it would not be needed for grades 6 through 12 as well. So there's also limited community engagement or support for this school. Yes, member, member Mase?
Yes, and I am concerned about the transportation issues, and especially regarding the one teacher assigned for nearly half the student body of EL students, which is a very highly concentrated area of EL students. That is a huge concern.
Okay. Anyone else? All right, seeing no further discussion, we've had a motion first and seconded. All those in favor of denying Nashville School of Excellence, please raise your hand. That is everyone. Thank you so much. Okay. That gets us to our third one. Thank you.
Our next New Star application. Our next new star application is Lee Cameron Elementary. Lee Cameron Elementary is a K-5 school with an enrollment cap of 360 students focusing on a pathway towards success in college and life in the Lee Cameron area. In academics, the curriculum and range of opportunities lack details related to at-risk learners, students with disabilities, and English learners. The school calendar and student schedules for ELA instruction in grades K through 2 have a maximum of 120 minutes, while the state recommends 150 minutes in the RTI manual. And lastly, there are no letters of support from prospective families. In operations, the core classrooms, art room, and kitchen do not have sufficient space for the anticipated student population based on the square footage provided in the application. And year one staff assumptions and projections indicate one teacher to meet the needs of students with IEPs, EL students, and students with 504 plans. In financial, the application notes unreasonable funding for insurance costs, textbooks, software, laptops, and other non-salary startup costs as outlined in the applicant's budget worksheet. And transportation for year one is for one bus, which leaves no margin for inflationary increase and no provision for students with special transportation needs. And lastly, with the closing of Lee Brick Church and the proposed opening of Lee Cameron Elementary and Lee Southeast Elementary, the applicant is at risk of expenses exceeding revenue in fiscal year '25. In portfolio review and performance record, the application highlighted the historical academic context for Lee Cameron. However, Lee Cameron received a bottom 10% designation letter from the Tennessee Department of Education for school years '21, '22. In addition, the application to the charter commission for Lee Brick Church was denied due to academic underperformance. And lastly, the agreement with the ASD with Lee Brick Church is being non-renewed due to academic underperformance and enrollment issues. The review team determined the rating for Lee Cameron is partially meets standard in each applicable section. I will turn it over to the board for the discussion and vote for the new star application for Lee Cameron Elementary.
Thank you. Okay. I would like to make a motion to deny Lee Southeast Elementary School due to the school not meeting nor exceeding any of the academic, operational, or financial portfolio and performance standards. Wait a minute. I have read the wrong school. Let me start over, I apologize. The motion to deny Lee Cameron Elementary School due to the school not meeting nor exceeding any of the academic, operational, financial portfolio and performance standards when evaluated by the MMPS review team in accordance to the Tennessee Department of Education's ratings and evaluation guidance, and due to deficiencies noted by the charter review team or the charter office board report. May I have a second?
Second.
It's been first and seconded, let's have some discussion. First, we will talk to Member TK Payne.
Pushes, or is it? Okay. Okay. Support, and my biggest push is there's no parental support. Also, the underperformance, which led to what we had the discussion of earlier, of Brick Church now coming back as an MMPS school, which means that they did not meet their performance. So, no. No, there's no.
Any other discussion? Yes, Member Mace.
And again, I'll go back to when we talk about southeast, we're talking about a heavily populated area. Well, it's still Cameron, sorry, Cameron. But to speak to one teacher to meet the needs of EL students and students with IEPs is not adequate.
Anyone else? Seeing no other discussion. All those in favor of denying Lee Cameron Elementary School, please raise your hand. Okay, thank you. That is unanimous. Okay. That gets us to Lee Southeast Elementary School.
Our next new star application is Lee Southeast. Lee Southeast Elementary is a K-5 school with an enrollment cap of 360 students focusing on a pathway towards success in college and life in the Lee Southeast area. In academics, the curriculum and range of opportunities lack details related to at-risk learners, students with disabilities, and English learners. The school calendar and student schedules for ELA instruction in grades K through 2 have a maximum of 120 minutes, while the state recommends 150 minutes in the RTI manual. And there are no letters of support from prospective parents. In operations, the core classrooms, art room, and kitchen do not have sufficient space for the anticipated student population based on the square footage provided in the application. And year one staff assumptions and projections indicate one teacher to meet the needs of all students with IEPs, EL students, and students with 504 plans. In financial, the application notes unreasonable funding for insurance costs, textbooks, software, laptops, and other non-salary startup costs as outlined in the applicant's budget and worksheet. And transportation for year one is for one bus, which leaves no margin for inflationary increase and no provision for students with special transportation needs. Lastly, with the closing of Lee Brick Church and the proposed opening of Lee Cameron Elementary and Lee Southeast Elementary, the applicant is at risk of exceeding expenses revenue in fiscal year '25. In portfolio review and performance record, the application highlighted the historical academic context for Lee Cameron. However, Lee Cameron received a bottom 10% designation letter from TDOE for school years '21 and '22. In addition, the application to the charter commission for Lee Brick Church was denied due to academic underperformance. Additionally, the agreement with the ASD with Lee Brick Church is being non-renewed due to academic underperformance and enrollment issues. The review team determined the ratings for Lee Southeast Elementary as partially meet standard in each applicable section. I will turn it over to the board for the discussion and vote for the new star application for Lee Southeast Elementary.
Thank you. I move to deny Lee Southeast Elementary School due to the school not meeting nor exceeding any of the academic, operational, nor financial portfolio and performance standards when evaluated by the MMPS review team and in accordance to the Tennessee Department of Education's ratings and evaluation guidance, and due to the deficiencies noted by the charter review team or the charter office board report. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been first and seconded. Do we have any discussion? Yes, Member Mace.
Yes, and once again, I'll go back to transportation concerns. We have children with different abilities, and if we are not providing an opportunity for those students to have transportation to the school, that's a big concern. And again, we have, for all of the reasons that have been previously stated by Dr. Roby and her team, I think this supports it. And the nine years of underperformance speaks to itself in this and other issues. So, yeah.
Okay, any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion to deny Lee Southeast Elementary School, please raise your hand. That is unanimous as well. Okay. And that gets us to Nurses Middle College. Thank you so much.
We've reached our last application, Nurses Middle College. Nurses Middle College is a 912 high school with an enrollment cap of 500 students focusing on a nursing college and career preparation. In academics, limiting career academy pathways to one school is not the research-based career academy model. There is only a single pathway at this school where MMPS academy schools offer multiple pathways for student choice and the ability to switch without having to change schools. In addition, MMPS currently offers similar healthcare models in 10 existing high school academies, and concerns are noted regarding the lack of coordination of business and university stakeholders. In addition, the schedules provided include an early release day every Wednesday, which does not meet the required 6.5 hours of attendance as outlined in state law. And lastly, the application does not include compelling evidence from parents interested in enrolling their students in the school. In operations, the board has limited experience in the operation of schools in Tennessee. The facility timeline is unrealistic based on the scope of renovations needed. In addition, the proposed gymnasium is unreasonable with only 2,000 square feet, and details are not provided about how the state required 90 minutes per week of physical activity can be achieved in a school for 500 students. Lastly, components of the professional development plan will not be possible since the early release days for students do not meet the state minimum requires outlined in state law. In financial, the budget for year one displays a sole reliance on a Bloomberg grant of approximately $2.1 million and a CSP startup grant of $750,000 as the only sources of revenue. And the applicant did not demonstrate a high level of financial expertise and only has the plan to hire a qualified candidate. In portfolio review performance record, this section was not applicable based on the category type and not reviewed or rated by review team members. The review team determined the rating for Nurses Middle College as partially meets standard in each applicable section. I will turn it over to the board for the discussion and vote for Nurses Middle College.
Thank you. Okay. I have a motion to deny Nurses Middle College. Oh, I'm sorry, was your hand raised? I missed you.
No, you didn't ask if anybody else wanted to make a motion.
So I was... Okay. You're welcome to make the motion. I did miss your hand, I apologize. Okay. I make the motion to deny Nurses Middle College due to the school not meeting nor exceeding any of the academic, operational, or financial standards when evaluated by the MMPS review team accordance to the Tennessee Department of Education's rating and evaluation guidance, and due to deficiencies noted by the charter review team or the charter office board report. Do I have a second? It's been first and seconded. Let's hear discussion, please. Yes, Member Mace.
I have a concern that there is a single pathway at the school, and that creates a situation where if we have a student that gets into the school and determines that this is not, in fact, the path they want to take, they would have to literally change to a different school. So that's a major concern that I think needs to be considered in this denial.
Okay. Yes, Member Masters.
I agree with that completely. It pisses me off, the book The Giver by Lois Lowry, where the children are assigned their careers at a very early age. I mean, the beauty of our academy's program is that ability to try things out and then change. I think the idea that, first of all, we're creating an entire school around the need in one career pathway. Second of all, we're then expecting students to enter that school at the age of 14, knowing that they're choosing their career pathway at 14. This program began in 2011. There aren't a lot of outcomes around exactly, or at least not reported around exactly, what healthcare-based careers their graduates have landed in. About 60% of them are in healthcare careers. However, they're also skewing at about 90% female in their enrollment, and there is a lot of research to support that gender stereotypes around career choice tend to be more pervasive the younger students are. So I also worry that we may be, should we choose to have this school open in our district, sort of perpetuating that idea around gender stereotypes in this particular career choice. I also have a lot of concerns around the funding source. When you have a sole funding source like that, that has so much political pull, that is inevitably going to affect the way that the school is run. I have a two-decade-long career in nonprofit fundraising, and I can tell you with absolute certainty that this is not a good structure with which to begin an organization, and it is not a sustainable way to start. This is going to be very difficult to continue to sustain the funding, and it's going to be difficult to continue to sustain the funding in a way that the school's operations will not be influenced by those funders. And I do not think this has any place in education. I think it will cannibalize the highly successful health, career academy pathways that we already have in MMPS. I am so incredibly strongly opposed to allowing anything close to this to be a part of Metro Nashville Public Schools.
I echo the sentiment that it is directly in competition with our academy's model, which is well-proven and equitable as it's throughout the entire district, as we have seen, not just today, but through many other times at the board and just within following MMPS News. There are lots of opportunities for people that have access, whether it's through funding or professionalism or whatever you might have, certifications, criteria, to partner with us, and I would encourage that. I cannot deny that there is a need for more nurses, just like there is a need for more educators and many other positions. But there's also already a path that is created, as discussed and explained quite clearly through my colleagues. And I would encourage that us continue to focus on those pathways and strengthening our academy's model to fill those needs and, of course, to best meet our students' outcomes. Not just to provide a single outcome that's possibly foreseeable, but also possibly going to leave that school, as also suggested by my colleagues. Dr. Doma McKinnney.
Thank you. And to highlight a perfect example of that, it was acknowledged in the report that we have 10 different academies across Metro Nashville public schools, health science academies across Metro Nashville public schools that are producing students that are going into the healthcare field. I will say I have a senior that's graduating from McGavick High School who has not only received one industry certification, but two in health sciences. He's graduating with his Certified Nursing Assistant and a Certified Medical Assistant and going with a full ride into Vanderbilt University. So our programs have proven to be successful. They're extremely successful in what we're doing across Metro Nashville public schools. And to have a niche program here that does not allow the flexibility for students who may enter a nursing program and then change their mind as our junior student school board member alluded to several school board members' meetings ago, where she went into health sciences and decided that health sciences was not for her. So that creates instability for our students when we don't have that flexibility of them entering and exploring. and exploring and finding a program that is best fit for them. So I strongly oppose us looking at, or I strongly oppose at this point looking at approving the nursing academy. Thank you.
Vice Chair Player.
When I first saw it, I was initially intrigued by the concept of having a nurses college. Going back to our ride, there is a great need for medical services and the deficit that is there, anyone who's been involved in the healthcare system. And speaking to the representatives of the school, I understand their intent. But for me, the devil's in the details about how that their intent to integrate and work with our academies isn't explicit of how it would mesh into our system to even if it would work with our 10 other programs, how they ease, how they will flow seamlessly between schools if one person wanted to move from one school or transfer to another. But I applaud their attempt of doing something innovative in their goal, their diversity outreach. But when it comes to partially replicating what we have, but also lack of detail for me of how it works seamlessly with the products that we have is the reason why I'm not supporting this.
Okay, we have a motion that's been first and seconded to deny Nurses Middle College. All those in fate, please raise your hand if you are in favor of denying the Nurses Middle College application. All right. All those opposed? All those abstaining? All those recusing?
I am recusing myself.
Thank you so much. All right, you have that? Okay. Thank you so much. I will turn this over to Dr. Battle if there's any further comments from the charter office.
No, ma'am, thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. I appreciate the detailed information that we received in advance, and then, of course, again tonight. Excuse me, I'm so sorry to knock over the spry almost. In advance of all that information, I appreciate it made it really helpful to us as board members to understand and keep it all on track. But I know it was a lot of work from the charter office and, of course, the charter review team, so I appreciate that very much. Let me... It does mean I have a number of papers up here, so one moment. All right. That gets me to board reports. For board report, board reports, excuse me. I will first turn it over to Vice Chair Frida Player to discuss our committee about budget.
Today, we had a budget committee. We approved unanimously both the Nutrition Service Fund and the Strategic Investment Federal Programs and Grants Fund as part of our budget, budget, baggage. Budget package. We naturally approve these two separate because they're self-contained funds in addition to our operating budget. And so we have continued to do this. They are prescribed grants and specific revenue and expense items separate and apart from our operating budget.
Thank you. That gets me to Member Mays to discuss with us student board member applications.
Yes, as a reminder, we will continue to accept applications for our next junior board member position through next Tuesday, April 30th at 5:00 p.m. will be the close of the applications. And so far, we've received several really good applications, so I'm looking forward to that. But as a reminder, if you are able to sit in on the interviews, the interviews will be on, the final round of interviews, I should say, will be on May 23rd. And if you are able to sit in as school board members, I would really appreciate that. We would love to get your feedback. And our two student school board members will be a part of our selection committee since they know better than we do what it takes to be a student school board member. So again, next Tuesday, April 30th at 5:00 p.m. is the deadline to submit applications and all required documentations.
Thank you so much. Lastly, as a quick board report, I wanted to remind everyone that we have a number of things upcoming up on our calendar. I know May is a really busy time, so I very quickly want to run through those, though they are on our Outlook calendar. On May 1st, I'm asking everyone to hold 4 o'clock for an announcement and then prepare a caravan to MNEA for our annual town hall with those members at 5:30. On May 2nd, at 6:00 p.m. is a district PAC meeting. May 4th is MMPS's signing day at the Music City Center at 10 o'clock. I know many of us want to be in attendance for that. There is also a SEIU Town Hall for local elected officials at 10 o'clock that morning. May 8th, at 11 o'clock, is our National Peer Symposium at Martin Center. I know there's been lots of interest on the board for that. May 11th is the School for Science and Math at Vanderbilt, the SSMV graduation at 10. At the Wyatt Center Rotunda at Vanderbilt. It's a really beautiful space, if you've not been there, by the way. The MMPS retirement reception is on the 13th at the Martin Center at 5:30. May 14th and the 28th, we still have our board meetings, and currently, there are no committee meetings planned. If you so want to have a committee meeting, please let Dr. Sophia and I know. And then our graduations begin on May 15th, and then there's many, more than one on many days through May 22nd. So please check your spreadsheet from Ms. Bobo to see if you have anything, if there's any changes that you might need to make, if something comes up in your schedule. And we have a busy month. I appreciate it so much. But that gets us to, you wanted to wait till announcements?
No. Just to note that the MNEA Town Hall is virtual at 6:30. You were talking about caravanning over there.
My apologies. I will check with Dr. P. Maybe that has changed.
May 1st, 6:30.
Thank you for correcting me, then. I will double-check that for sure on my calendar. Okay, that gets us to announcements. Maybe start with District 1. Or may I, District 1, yeah, we'll start with District 1, sorry. So sorry, I apologize. Nope, sorry.
I just want to, again, remind parents about the Meet the Principal meeting on April the 29th, Monday, April 29th, for our new leader, Dr. Robin Beard at Brick Church Middle.
Okay, District 3.
Thank you. So I want to be sure everyone knows that Southern Word has their Grand Slam Finals at TSU Student Center Forum, April 27th at 6:00 p.m. Some of the top student spoken word artists, the Student Youth Poet Laureate will be there. It's always a really fun event, and you can get tickets at southernword.org. They're an amazing MMPS partner, doing a lot of really cool work in our school, so encourage you to support. Also, Stratford will be having their Beehive Grand Opening on May 14th at 1:00 p.m. So if you want to see in action a lot of what we've talked about tonight, that's going to be going down at Stratford in District 3, and it's going to be a lot of fun.
District 4.
I just have a couple of announcements. One, I just want to re-congratulate our valedictorians and salutatorians, their families, their schools, and their community who helped support them and get them to where they are. It's a great representation of the great work that we're doing in our district and just proud to acknowledge their efforts throughout the years. Second, I want to, I want to thank our, actually, our parents who worked with Stanford Montessori to raise funds to build an outdoor classroom within their school. There will be an open house and celebration for that coming up soon, and I will make sure that I post that information publicly so that we do, so that you guys can attend or the community can attend the celebration.
District 5.
I just have...
Okay.
I just have one announcement. The Historical Commission is hosting National Historic Marker Day at Hume Falk on Friday. Let's look and see what time the event, the event is going to be between the hours of 10 to 11. I will be there. Some other council and state representatives will be there as well. So opening up for you all to join me.
Okay. District 6.
Just two quick things. As a reminder, all of our graduations will be livestreamed. So if someone is not able to attend, they can still, they will still be able to see the entire ceremonies. And also, today is National School Bus Driver Day, so thank you to all of our transportation technicians. You are appreciated.
Thank you. All right, District 7.
This past weekend, we, the city dedicated Diane Nash Plaza. There was a couple of students there. They're in the James Lawson Band, actually led the parade from First Baptist Capitol Hill to the courthouse. So it was great to see our lovely band members in the name of James Lawson, who actually spoke by video to honor Diane Nash. It was a great time to see. And actually, our salutatorians, where actually some of the volunteers helped guiding the march. So to see our students be part of history and honor history with a living legend was very neat to see the connection to the real life, to what you read in the books. And then also, happy Passover.
District 8.
All right, so everybody buckle up for a second because I'm going to say some things, and I don't have them perfectly thought out, but I have emotions and feelings that I need to say on the board floor. So this, this should be, for me, a great meeting. We, I, we announced a successful partnership on raising $5 million to support three schools across the district. We had a resolution to support climate and sustainability change, getting to a place with some students where we really wanted to be. And there are a lot of examples of success with partnership with Vanderbilt, all of these great things, district success, growth over time. But these meetings where we talk about charter schools and what we're doing with charter schools are heart-wrenching to me. I was at Brick Church when the announcement was first made about the movement of that school into the Achievement School District. I was at the state when the Achievement School District started, and there was real hope for that from people who care a lot about kids. And there are lots of ways in which it was short-sighted, and there's lots of work that didn't work, as admitted by folks who started that. But nobody gets into this work for any reason other than the fact that they want to see kids succeed, and they want to see improvement in the lives of kids. And this district is making incredible changes, which need to be recognized by this community for the changes that they are. And at the same time, we do not have a monopoly on good ideas. Nor does anyone who's coming to us with an idea about the thing that they think needs to be the idea here. And I don't know the right answer to all of this, but it is hard for me to sit and vote against some things that I think, you know, could be good ideas, actually, and could be interesting to do. Would I prefer that we were doing them as a district in partnership with folks rather than having to figure out whether or not it's this thing or that thing, and it's getting approved, and money's moving here and moving there? Yeah, sure, sure as heck would. But I think we all need to make more of an effort, both in, on this side of the table and on the side of the table that was represented in the room tonight. It's not my place to tell my colleagues what should happen in their communities. I do not believe that that is the case. I do, they, the communities in which we are voting on where schools might go are not my community. I don't live there. It's not, it's not my business. But I just don't feel like we're doing this right. And I don't know what the answer is, and I've not said this, all of this before in this way, and I cannot believe that I'm doing it right now and with basically an empty room. But it'll be recorded, and I'll have said it, and... That's all. Thanks.
Thanks. District 9.
So I have several congratulatory things. First of all, the Lawson baseball team has been undefeated in district play, and they just won the regular season district championship title. So I'm very proud of them, really excited to see them continue to move forward. And the Lawson softball team is also undefeated in district play, so I'm really excited about all the great ball that's happening at Lawson right now. A reminder to everybody that the annual faculty softball game between Gower Elementary and Harpeth Valley Elementary will take place this Friday, April 26th, at the Bellevue Sports Athletic Association Fields, formerly Babe Ruth Fields. It'll take place at 6 o'clock, but the gates will open at 5 o'clock. Anybody who wants to come, the entrance fee will be $5 per car, not person, per car. So come out, support our two elementary schools, and we're really excited to see the rivalry for this continue to heat up because it's been really fun every year. And then a final thank you to the Lawson Band for being there at the Diane Nash Plaza dedication. And I was so, so, so sad that I could not make it. I had other commitments that I couldn't get out of. But I am very proud that they were represented there, and I'm very proud that Mr. James Lawson himself was able to speak and be there in support of what a historic moment that was for us to recognize our history and to give some flowers to somebody who's needed them for a while. So really proud of that and looking forward to seeing our baseball and softball teams continue to dominate. Thanks.
Thank you. I have a general announcement that there is a vaccination event for MMPS employees at the Wellness Center here at Berry Hill on Tuesday, May 14th at 10:30. The Croker Pharmacy is offering no-cost vaccinations for COVID-19, RSV, shingles, Hep A B and B, A and B, excuse me, T-dap, and pneumonia. Now, somebody that recently had pneumonia, you don't want that. So please consider being vaccinated because that took me down in December through weeks afterwards. So thank you so much. Other than that, Overton has had a number of big wins recently. Frankly, there's so many that I'm just going to have to create a Facebook page, or a Facebook post about it and talk to those individual students. And there's several upcoming presentations at some of my elementary schools, including Shane and some other musicals. I'm excited to see those, and will be attending many of them. So be there, no further business. I appreciate everyone in attendance. This meeting is adjourned.
This has been a service of the Metro Nashville Network. If you would like to see this presentation again or for more information on this and other programs, visit Nashville.gov.